Are back live in our committee, the whole agenda, we are at six point one, we are skipping five point one until one P M as that is a timed delegation. Uh C A O verbal update.
Hi, everyone, uh just following up to U B C M, we did not get a meeting with the Minister Ministry of Forests as we requested to talk about. We go camping, long term camping, plotting, living on mostly crowned land. And we would like a motion for the board to send a letter to the minister on that.
Okay, so move by Director Max, second by Director Rich Jones. Uh all in favor, anyone opposed, motion carries. Okay, well, for the C A O verbal update, please move by Director Rainbow, second by Director Morton. All in favor, any opposed, motion carries. Uh I do not have a verbal update for today. Nothing new has come along, any late business committee, the whole. Being none. Uh we will recess this committee as a whole until one P M. We have sixteen minutes until lunch, so follow the the flow. We are now reopening regular, do we have time for the late? I feel like we do fairly.
Eight point six?
Eight point six on the regular agenda, so um. So eight point six, are we doing staff in for this? Or if we missed?
I mean, I can speak to it, but yeah, if you want to go fast, and and you can also see if the sphere, if I can add.
Uh yeah, okay, let's do that, want to speak to it, just tops of the lights.
Yeah, re- really just an opportunity, this mountain planners conference is very applicable to some areas within here, including mountainous ranges, the environmental impacts of that. And then the overall uh resort or residence for all. This planners conference is usually in the United States, first time it's in Whistler, the economies of scales for staff to attend are very good, no hotel, et cetera. So and L G cap does can support eighty percent of it, we just need it for L G cap, we need a motion.
Okay, move by Director Rainbow, second by Director Mac, any comment?
Yeah, I I stalled a little bit on the coming out of the climate action, I just, although I know. Canada is certainly contributing our fair share to the carbon footprint through our fires, um. But I I thought. Maybe it belongs more in the fire emergency response budget as a cost. Um, I I wish, I I love it that we were spending some of the climate budget, for example, on the education that we talked about yesterday. And that's more how I'd like to see that fund spent, but I I won't vote against it, I just wanted to make that comment.
Anyone else? Okay, um. Okay, I'll call the question, all in favor, anyone opposed, motion carries. Uh thank you. Eight point seven is an information report regarding the B C founding, B C Parks Foundation purchase of D District Lot eight thirteen in the Pepperdine Meadows electoral area C. Does anyone have any questions? Would anyone like to move receipt, or did you want to ask a question?
No, it's just that it's quite an interesting read and uh it'll be interesting to see. Where did it go with this um?
At the foundation?
Yeah, I just uh when you read this and and read their. Their connection to B C Parks and the government and all that there's. They're pretty intertwined, obviously, so uh. I have. Thoughts about that, but hopefully they're positive, but. Anyway, so we'll see where it all goes, because they're buying up land all over the province. So, interesting.
You don't have the time, just. Find it pretty jarring that, I mean, they apparently have some First Nations rap. On it's, it seems, the process seems unnecessarily. Unclear and the fact that they didn't consult with some of the local First Nations about that, I I definitely had a problem with that, but that's, I guess that's their problem.
And that's one thing that they say in their in their brochure here is that they consult with all First Nations. And all that stuff, right, uh but in this case, they did not, um which is kind of interesting, but.
Some jarring notes, and they're also purchasing some ranchland in area B, um but I don't have too much more information on that.
Uh Director Needham, anything that keeps you up at night about this?
No.
Okay, uh we'll just um receive the report. Move by Director Mac, second by Director Hopple, uh for their comments. Yeah, let keep our eye on things that bother us like this and bring them back if it bothers you again. I'll call the question, all in favor, anyone opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
We weren't asked about this at all, right, as as the regional board, yeah.
No, we got a letter, we got two or three letters in last meeting in July, and that was what prompted us to um.
From constituents.
Yes.
And constituents, yeah, like who's going to manage the invasive species on the. Property, but I can ask questions myself.
Uh okay, let's move on to eight point eight, this is the second quarter financials information report. Uh we don't have a presentation, but we do have staff here to answer any questions, anyone has?
Good afternoon, um I'll just go over two quick items that keep me up at night. First, uh in fourteen hundred building inspections, you'll notice that the building permit revenues are pacing under budget. However, building permit application fees are pacing ahead of budget and looking at the financials, like we are seeing an increase of building permit revenues come through in Q three, so. Hopefully, that looks a little better come the end of the year. Um for seventeen eleven, seat and fire, um this service expenses are trending over budget.
Yeah.
Um, just something to highlight, and there was some work, additional work required this year in that service, that's I think we even talked about before. Um seventeen fourteen, which is House on Fire East, we received a four hundred and eighty five thousand dollar contribution from Tiger Bay Developments, so you will see that. As revenue in that service for this um quarter. Seventeen seventeen is Wedge Woods Fire, um that's also trending over budget due to additional staff time that was required for the new agreement. Um eighteen hundred Goldbridge Street Lighting, the expenses are over budget, um as we received some additional charges for a previous project. Um for L E D lighting upgrades um in a previous year, so those were unbudgeted. Eighteen oh one Braylon Street Lighting, um expenses are trending over budget due to an issue with B C Hydro where they've overestimated our street lighting count. So uh staff are currently working on resolving this issue, but we have paid additional expenses because of that. And then the last is twenty seven oh two, which is Darcy Water, um it's also trending over budget. Um however, there is an initial twelve thousand of various amenity that we've allocated to cover off operational expenses that's still remaining to be applied to. Um, any other questions, I'm happy to answer.
I think for clarity on the Wedge Woods, is that the um agreement with Whistler for sort of what's there, or is that the work to support? Uh the rezoning application, or is it a bit of both, or do you know?
Uh I believe it's mainly the work with Whistler, but it could be a bit of both, I don't actually have like details into what each hour uh committed to the services for, but.
In seventeen fourteen, House Southeast Fire Services, the four hundred eighty five thousand dollars, is that scheduled to be uh used for the new fire truck? Once the hall is built at Ferry Creek?
Um I'm not aware of what the plans are for that, um we will transfer it to reserve and that's something that we can discuss. I'm not sure if there's been competitions had that I haven't been included in, but um yeah, I just wanted to highlight that that's been received.
And just to comment, um I have the Furied Creek Community Association meeting the other day when they talked about the streetlights. Very complimentary, they're very happy with the work that's been done, so I just pass it on to you and and Omar's at the back there as well, thank you.
Great, good to hear.
Uh thank you to the chair, um just out of curiosity, in the way that S L R D does our budgeting, what happens if we do have an unexpected unbudgeted? Like costs that comes forward, so whether it's under billing by B C Hydro. How do we cover that cost and do we have, like, can you remind between with that?
Uh so if you have an unexpected cost and we run over budget in a year, that becomes like a surplus deficit carry forward. So that deficit gets carried forward into our twenty twenty six budget. Um and then in the twenty twenty six budget, we can address it on how we want to cover that, whether that's via requisition, transferring operating reserve funds. Or we could look at using one of the discretionary funds to offset it.
I thought we weren't allowed to incur deficits, so.
We're not allowed to budget for a deficit, but we can incur a deficit if it happens. So if, for example, if expenses run over by ten thousand dollars, then we will, you will see. In the financials, you will see the carry forward deficit listed for each service online. Just under revenue.
That different than municipal?
Yeah, budgeting, yes, there's a cost centers, you know, you certain things.
So, so for example, this street lighting issue.
In the next budget process.
Yeah, so we would look at it soon when we move into twenty twenty six budgeting and we determine a plan to cover those costs.
I'm just really happy to see uh through the chair, thank you, that. Littlewood Area Refuge Ground is tracking on budget, yes, it seemed like it was never going to stop blowing up. Um then also uh recognize the problem uh with seat and fire services and yeah, we need to have a discussion about that for sure. Thank you.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah.
Director Harper, go ahead.
So just this weird anomaly and the difference between municipal finance and and regional district, I need to follow up on, so. A service can go. Over budget. But what covers that delta queue of what's there if we're just assuming that there's appropriate reserves to pull from in the actual. Sense of the funds and how does that, what are the limits of of this concept?
I'm uh, okay, let me try and explain this the best I can.
Yeah, please.
Um like, obviously, when we provide quarterly financials, like. We're tracking how services are going, um we can't just incur expenses that like weren't included in the budget, so we can't just. Purchase something that was never budgeted, but obviously, we can, you know, if certain things are required to maintain a level of service, then those expenses may need to. Be charged to a service, like if a pipe burst, like we're going to have to repair that pipe, and maybe that wasn't in the budget. Um then we have that deficit in the current year, like in the carry forward to the next year, and we would address it via the budget, whether that's requisition, reserve funds. Or something else, that being said, if it was a large expense, like we may come to the board and say, this is happening, how can we fund it in the current year, rather than carry forward a very large deficit? Um, yeah, but there is um like. That is our policy is to have reserves that would cover normal deficit, yeah, like every. Yeah, I hope that.
Well, that's fine, I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure that I take every learning opportunity as the these processes vary uh from.
I just handled on a case by case basis, like I wish there was a very simple solution to solving deficits that would make my job a lot easier, but. Yeah.
The differences in a municipality, we can do a budget amendment that we can then pull from a. A reserve fund to cover that cost, which we can't do at regional districts.
But otherwise, it's the same, if you run a deficit in Squamish in 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 an area, you can, you have to budget for next year, so we can't budget for a deficit. But if we, if something blows up and you run behind, then it has to be accounted for this year in your budget, and it's a carry forward.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's the same, same concept, yeah.
Different ways to get there.
That's what keeps you up at night.
We can't move money between services.
Yeah, that's right.
So and I guess an example, if we didn't have enough reserves to cover the deficit in the previous year, then we would be looking for some other funding or something, yeah, taxing or funds or. Yeah.
Any other question? Someone like to move receipt of the second quarter? By Director Max, second by Director Richmond, comments? All in favor, any opposed, motion carries. Uh let's recess for lunch.
Working lunch?
Would you like to your work lunch, Mike?
Well, it's not that I'd like to, but I will be leaving at my quarter to two, so.
What kind of lunches?
His sandwiches, boy.
Let's take a minute to go and get our lunches, we'll bring it back, come back in at eight point nine. All right. We are back. Uh. Outside. Uh eight point nine. We're at a request for decision uh regarding the solid waste and resource management plan. We need a board resolution to support uh doing this work, we don't have choice, we do have to do this work, so. Kind of turn it over to Director Ben to uh.
I'll leave it at that for any questions.
So we have Mary Lou as well here to answer any questions if anyone's got them.
Sorry.
Just, I was just trying to give.
Four and nine, looking for a little more clarity of the scope and just so it's in the back of my mind and. You know, I know Squamish, we have to move quickly, I think, but we've got a landfill expansion, so on, and I know Whistler ships waste. Out of Whistler and so just like, are are is there a an opportunity for efficiency or collaboration or something here? And are we getting into that level of scope work, or is this going to be a smaller scope? Um.
Yeah, through the chair, um I can speak to that, so the um right now, we're just reviewing the um the proposals. And we will get to that level of details of like how we can work together, or we can be more efficient. And this is where we want to see the plan for the next ten years to go to that level of details. And we will bring reports to the board when we go through all those questions and strategies and actions. So um the board will be kept informed, we will be um creating a committee. Just to review all the the process at every step of the way, um and board will be able to uh sit at that meeting at that committee. So um and we will inform the public as well through um the social media, as well as the Get Engage uh platform that we we have, so, yeah.
It's kind of just like, I know our, you know, we don't have an unlimited timeline, and so. Part of me is, are we gonna have these conversations soon enough to make a difference and take advantage, and maybe it is what it is, but. And I assume our teams are are talking, but just wanted to like that.
Yeah, we um we have the District of Squamish as well as Resort Municipality of Western to review the scope of work when we build the um the R F P. And the timeline might be tricky, but we will do our best to uh work towards it. At the end of the day, uh the the plan will have to be um accepted, approved by the ministry, which. In the past, it took a couple of years, we're hoping that this time it's not, so um hopefully, we can um move things around. And um in terms of the Squamish landfill, the expansion is being approved by the ministry, and I know the District of Squamish staff. Um is working towards that, um in terms of like um the the action that needs to happen. Uh it's approved to their through their current uh management plan, however, so yeah, it's it's a timeline, it's a little bit tricky. Um and that's kind of the reason why we decided to start sooner than uh than later.
Director Scholz?
Thank you, um just a a comment, I would be grateful if in the public consultation phase. For engagement, if you use the local newspaper as well as the hub for any social media, their hub's doing a great job on that. But I still have a lot of area B residents that really wouldn't see something on the website, but they might see it in the newspaper. And I think what's happened with the landfill there will get probably quite a lot of positive feedback and maybe some suggestions worth doing, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, someone like to make the resolution, move by Director Richmond, second by Director Cattengale, comments? All in favor, anyone opposed, carries. Thank you, Mary Lou. Okay. Eight point ten, Pepperdine Meadow Road culvert deterioration of public safety.
Good afternoon, Mark Philip, Director of Tech Services, uh this request for decision is asking the board to send a letter to the Honorable Minister of Ministry of Transportation and Transit. To highlight the urgent public safety risk, both by two deteriorating uh. Mott uh Ministry of Transportation owned culverts under Pepperdine Meadows Road at Ryan Creek, as well as uh requesting immediate action to repair and replace the two damaged culverts.
Director Grant? Questions?
Over there.
Oh, sorry.
Over at the lunch camp, um not a question, but um just I don't normally get involved in the wordsmithing of letters, but I would think it would. Be good to include in the letter the fact that we've been making this request for.
Since April last year.
Since April last year, we've gotten nothing and it's now deteriorated to such a level, so I don't know, I think it just bears mentioning, like we've been. On different levels, you, you are like in different places, so I it's kind of frustrating to me, I'd like to include some strong language in that. We've been trying to do this and gotten it.
We'll do, through the chair, we have a long documented, uh yeah, history of this, and we should share that.
Perfect.
So, I I've been advised I have to be polite in the pod. Um.
Sandra?
No, mine.
I'll let those know, wait.
But um, yeah, this is this stuff, and it's not only this, this is just one thing. I mean, we ask for stuff constantly from M O T to get uh maintenance done, puddles fixed, all this stuff. And uh we get minimal help from M O T and the contractor, so. We need to be politely uh forceful in our requests and say enough is enough, like this stuff is gonna. With the roads and the and the deterioration and and amount of puddles, what? Somebody is going to get seriously hurt, we've had no a number of vehicles uh destroying wheels and tires and uh suspension. Nothing ever happens, so anyways.
So.
That's as polite as I can be.
Would you, thank you. Just that, um. We can write a letter and follow it up with a request for a virtual meeting with the minister. Because I think we. We can only write so many letters that go ahead of it. So the the motion would then be to write the letter highlighting the urgent public safety risks. Uh and request immediate action to repair, but also request a meeting. Uh between the minister and myself and the vice chair. So that's a motion, move by Director Richmond, second by Director Mac.
Not so much the vice chair as the area C.
Well.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, both hats on. Um. Motion, uh I'll call the question, Oliver, is there anyone opposed, motion carries? Thank you.
You.
Great, thank you. Hey, we're.
Just thought about, I know, I don't want to take us back to that, but just when we're looking at that um that meeting, and I get the letter is advocating on.
Those specific.
Very specific, but the in that meeting, I'm assuming that we're from comments that there's other issues. Can we sort of surface those in some ways so the board can help support with with that, doesn't need to.
Yeah, I don't think we need a resolution, but I think that.
I'm just curious what improvement we're advocating.
Yeah.
Or when it's replacing culverts, it's pretty clear around cave replacement of culverts, but is it? Meaningful consultation or a good avenue to or feedback to you, like, I don't know what we're.
Let's take that offline into agenda sending and we'll have a bigger conversation with that. All right, let's talk about search and rescue.
Lunch is delicious, um. We uh.
This Laurie's got a half a sandwich.
Right home, right home.
Uh the purpose of the report, it provides some options for funding for the Squamish search and rescue request that was received a few months ago. Um as you may remember, they're building a new search and rescue base, a base at the Squamish Airport, and they requested five hundred thousand dollars of funding from the S L R D. Um we reviewed the area D funds that would be able to support this request. Um currently, the available funding for twenty twenty five is not sufficient to support the full amount of this request. Um I provided the balances for twenty twenty five in the report, and I've also included an estimate of what we expect to have going into. Per twenty twenty six, as we do receive additional funds for these um reserves each year. Um I think at this point, it's a discussion of the board to determine what level of funding they would like to provide. If they wish to support this project and which fund they would like to use, and I'm happy to answer any questions or help with this discussion if needed.
Um Director Rainbow and then Director Stoner.
Yeah, kind of, the the first one, area D payment in lieu of taxes. Available or eligible to forty seven six sixty four, is that the southern pilt you're talking about there?
Yes.
It is, so that's the one we share with the District of Squamish.
That's southern pelt, yeah.
Okay, good, thank you.
Um thank you, that was one question I had, and then the second question that I had was the amount that you're showing for twenty twenty six, is that? Compounding off a twenty twenty five, or is that like that?
Uh.
Get four hundred thousand every year.
No, that's compounding, so that would be the total available by in twenty twenty six.
Two hundred and forty seven.
Okay, so we receive a hundred and sixty thousand for area D southern pelt rather than four hundred thousand.
And we use southern pelt for a few other things.
All right, correct, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Just for some context, who responds in the S L R D beyond the scope of the squatter search and rescue, like so north of of the air limit, response limit?
With the search and rescue business in Pepperdine.
They all get called, unless something big happens, but. They're all funded differently.
They're in a little way, too.
We have, we have, we have a cost center in in area D, a search and rescue. And the bulk of it goes to um Squamish search and rescue and marine search and rescue, and a small amount goes to Whistler search and rescue. That's that's based on the where the money comes from, because because it's the whole of area D, so it includes Pine Crest and Black Tusk. And Squamish don't go up into that area, that's that's the Whistler area. That's for operating funds.
Just um. Thank you for this background as to what's available. Do these have different, do these uh sources have different? Points in time where we can interact with them, like during the budget cycle, or do these fall under, do these all fall into that category of things that can be decided at a? At a regular, at this meeting, as a uh for example?
Um yeah, any of them can be decided at any time, I think for pilt and for C W F, sometimes we will allocate in the budget if we have a project. That's needed, otherwise they come to the board as like, or the E A D and then board as an ad hoc request.
And and just just, you know, when you look at the straight numbers there. Out of that four hundred nineteen, we traditionally have supported the Squamish Library. Um and quite frankly, I wouldn't like to cut that off, um we supported um the District of Squamish. And um area D agricultural plan, um Squamish Camp, I wouldn't want to cut that off. So although the amount is four hundred nineteen, it's it's actually quite a bit less than that.
Uh go ahead.
Yeah, I I I had assumed that there were some plans for for these outside of this, so I just wonder how do we get? Uh. Clarity, whether that's asking for it here here now, or or as to like what of that is contributed or is sort of like. Anticipated to be needed for those other initiatives or or whatever. anticipated to be needed for those other initiatives or or whatever.
You give me one second here, I can just confirm an average of
Or what that has been over time, maybe, is that
Yeah, I believe, let me just pull this up really quickly and then I can comment better to it.
While you're doing that, I would like to poll the board. Do we want to support the whole amount that they're asking?
Not from here.
No.
You know.
We're going to deal with where it comes from, but the question of half million dollars, does the whole board want to support the whole ask? Because this is a capital campaign that has competing interests. And so we can all think of things that we want to spend that money on. And to the members of this board. I think, and no one disagrees that they provide an amazing service for our whole region. And they all come in when things go wrong. But does this board want to suggest a smaller amount? But Director Rainbow first and then Director Rich Jones.
I've supported search and rescue since I've been a director and I really value what they do and I'm, and I'm prepared to support them, continue to support. I would have a real problem putting five hundred thousand dollars in wherever it came from. Because it's not the only search and rescue group in the regional district. And if we do it for Squamish, then what about Whistler? What about Llewellyn? What about you know, anywhere else? So I'd I'd be interested in arriving at a number smaller than five hundred thousand. Considerably smaller. I'd be prepared to put some of this in here. Not out of select. I don't think that's what select funds is for. It's more for smaller community groups and smaller grants. Community Works Fund. We've got you know, we've got water systems and wastewater systems and things and asset management. I don't think there's much available in there, even if it's eligible. Could we take money from Community Works Funds and put it into a capital project like this?
Well, and the the political question is, are we up grabbing from a responsibility that should otherwise be covered by another order of government? Given that the search and rescue is not a localized need. This is a provincial responsibility and it's well documented that they've been left out of a lot of conversations for a very long time. And yet when the chips are down, they're the first ones there. I do have a speakers list. I'm going to go to Director Rich Jones and Director Herford and then to Director Stone. And then I'll come back to you, Colin. I just
Yeah.
This is just the go ahead. Maybe.
Maybe I'll just say that I I would suggest a payment maybe around a hundred thousand dollars, but that's just depending on how how director directors from Squamish and area D feel. But I really thought we should just pay a smaller portion of this ask.
Simon and then Jenna.
Yeah, I'm trying to there's a couple of concepts here I'm wrestling with. One is that you know, as much as there are other search and rescues in our, in our, in our region, they're not all trying to build a new base at this time. So I do think that if others have that opportunity, that we may be well advised to support them in that endeavor, they're just not doing that right now. So whereas it is what's happening in the context of Squamish, that's like one piece, which is different than supporting on an ongoing basis and helping in that time where they need a ground swell to get something over the line. So but the other part is I'm trying to figure out, I, I, I take that the the ask is quite high. I'm trying to figure out what we can afford. And with the context we have here, this is helpful, but there's a layer missing of like what's sort of pre-allocated or what's earmarked, which is coming, I think, in a responsible earlier question. And then understand what's maybe that hundred K is too much in the context. I don't, like, I'm having a hard time. I'm missing a piece to make that decision. But yeah, yeah. But so for me, I'd like to see how, what we can afford to do that gets as close as we can to the five. And that might be less than a hundred. Maybe it's somewhere a little bit more, but I need some more granular details to help me get there. So I would like to support them to the highest amount that we can, that we can afford to responsibly. And that's why I'm hunting for other little bits, but one distinction.
Jenna, and then we do have one o'clock delegation, so we'll make
Yeah, and maybe our one o'clock delegation is the answer that we need. Solving this problem. But I do think it's important for folks to know some context here. So as you can see by the report, the District of Squamish is fully up grabbing on some of this. We've put in two point three million dollars, so vast majority of the funding. And we have also done so in in tandem with doing a lot of provincial advocacy and outreach, asking the province to show up in different ways. Folks who know, we've done different forms of advocacy on behalf of search and rescue and fair pay for a volunteer model that is not sustainable in the long term, especially given the amount of calls that we're seeing through the Cedar Sky corridor. And we have been met with roadblocks and gates and radio silence at the province. And so the reality is that there are folks on the ground who are still showing up every time that there is a call. And we all know that these pinch points happen for local government in different ways. And this is just one where at least at the table of the District of Squamish, we felt like we had to show up in a different way. And so that's why we've put in the money here. But I just wanted this table to know that it hasn't gone without a level of advocacy as well. And the ask continues to be that the province actually show up and do its job, but it hasn't done so in this particular scenario.
Okay. I do see Sal's hand, but I did want to make my own comment here. This is an engaged conversation that I don't want to rush to an answer. I feel like I'd like to send staff away, given the comments that have been made. So I'd like to defer this motion to next month and have you come back. There's no urgency on the timing of this. There's probably urgency. They'd love to know that they're getting it or not, but I feel like we want to have a better recommending, like a recommendation, given the comments here about capacity, unless you can kind of you want to come back, we can recess this, come back after our delegation and continue the conversation if you think that we can come to an answer today.
I think it would be good to continue this discussion just for a little bit. I have some stuff that I want to comment on. If we want to take a recess and have the one o'clock, then that's fine.
Yeah, let's do that. Okay, so I'm going to reset this regular meeting of the board. And we're going to reopen our committee of the whole agenda and and have our one o'clock delegation and then we'll be back on regular agenda in about twenty minutes. Great.
Sixteen.
All right, we are back in our committee of the whole agenda at five point one. The delegation from Cedar Sky, West Vancouver, a member of our Legislative Assembly, Jeremy Valariot. Thank you for joining us today. We understand that you have an incredibly packed day and we are happy to have you address our board. Tell us what you'd like to tell us. You've got just about fifteen minutes. Happy to let you take the reins.
Thank you, Chair Ford, and I'm sorry to be joining you from a vehicle. I'm on the territory of the Heisla Nation and just between meetings. So this is the easiest, easiest spot, but and hopefully next time in person. I, if we only have fifteen minutes, I'll just, I'll talk really briefly and then I'd like to see if there's any questions and just hear from the board about about the issues you're grappling with. I had a look at yesterday's agenda for what we worked through and, you know, but definitely here, like to hear on areas where I can maybe build support. I'll just give you, yeah, quick update, since we haven't, we haven't done this since the the October, last October election, since this term started. Really spending the, after a fairly grueling legislative session where I spent way too much time in Victoria from November to May. It's great to be back in the Cedar Sky corridor and we've got our constituency office up and running and fully staffed and there's three great staff who seem to be making a lot of progress and registering some successes and some frustrations, but they're, they're in full gear. And been up and down the corridor, trying to hear from people and attend events. As we look towards EVCM next week and getting back to a legislative session in October, November, I'll say that our Green Caucus and and hopefully good parts of the NDP government are pretty focused on delivering on the priorities of CARGA, which is our cooperation agreement with the with the NDP government. And we're moving along on those those things. It was somewhat of a slow start, but we've got a primary care review underway, Clean BC review that should be wrapped up by late October. Full review of forests and electoral reform that my colleague Rob Botrowell is interested in. And we've had some, some humble successes in terms of rental assistance and heat pumps and the like. But the big one, of course, as we all know, is regional transit. We are following closely local government and particularly the SLRD's discussions with with staff and the and the ministry on this. We're also able to update the, what we call our CARGA Big Table, which is Deputy Premier Nikki Sharma and House Leader Mike Farmworth to update how we're, how we're progressing on some of these initiatives that are really intended to be finished by twenty twenty five. So keeping in touch with that, about ready to apply some political pressure when it's needed. And I'll be consulting with you on that and on how and when and possibly some public pressure if if needed that we can, we can coordinate. But I'm hopeful that that this will, we do have a written agreement and I'm hopeful this will continue to move forward. But it is we are not at a point of having a plan for implementation yet, and that needs to happen within the next couple of months. So I think I'm, I'm going to leave it there. I mean, you'll be aware of many of the issues that we've been working with that you have also likely been working with. I'll just list off a few in Choff, Choffrey Park, trying to secure foundry funding for for Pemberton. The Stalium Nations Declaration of State of Emergency and then generally, you know, unhoused strategy in Squamish and like, along with a number of issues related to the highway closures. And trying to bring along a discussion about a potential probably long-term opportunity on passenger rail without without disrupting the discussions on just getting buses on the road for regional transit. So I'll just, I'll leave it there. I know you've, we've got EVCM coming up. I'll see many of you in person in Victoria next week. More than happy to sit in on whatever meetings you you feel appropriate. I think typically MLA sit in as observers. Potentially able to help out on the backend or or add some context, but more than happy to sit in if if that's, that's of assistance and and maybe I can hear from you on what what your priority, priorities are for next week and 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 the rest of the year and how I can help to support that. Along with any questions you have about the state of state of democracy in BC and and the current political landscape.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions they want to kick off? No? Okay. Well, to your point about EVCM, we are very excited about next week. This is a great opportunity for us to continue to meet face to face with ministers in the premier on very important issues that impact the constituents here. As you noted, regional transit is one of our top priorities, always has been, seems like it always will be. Housing and a number of different issues. Management of forests and illegal camping is a big issue for us. We'll be forwarding the list of appointments that we have and certainly connecting with you and your staff on where we should collaborate for next week. I think we probably already have. But we will for sure meet up next week several times and and share that work. And it doesn't end there. We would like to have you back in person at a future meeting with us so that we can continue to move these files forward. This is really helpful to have you interacting with our board and yeah, I think these kinds of updates are always useful. So let's make it a habit, not a once in a while.
Yeah, absolutely. Sorry, it's taken a while to get to this. I'm happy to to do it. Early semiannually, let's, let's get a regular schedule set up.
All righty, sounds good. With that, go ahead.
I was gonna, is there, just on the Clean BC review and thinking about what we're seeing policy wise at the moment, is there anything as we're engaging in conversations at EVCM that you think would resonate with the government in terms of saying, hey, we should really pay attention to what this review says when it comes out?
Yeah, I mean, I think expressing that we, that we need a reset on Clean BC, that it needs to be integrated into into the broader economic picture and and some of the decisions that we we make in terms of specific policy, there will there will certainly be items here that we will be pushing for implementation right off off the bat. And and I think, yeah, being able to say that there'll be some things that come out of this review that we're going to hear from us on that we want to, want to see happen. Is it the big benefit? I think it probably won't be, it's still in a very interim draft form, so it probably won't be into the public realm until late October, mid-November. But at that point, those will be things that we can all push for, especially as it relates to climate resilience and municipalities and regional districts and some of the other work that you're doing.
More to come. Thank you for taking the time with us today and we will see you next week.
Thanks a lot. Look forward to it. Have a great afternoon meeting.
Okay, so now we need a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole, moved by Director Jones, signed by Director Morton. We're down committee of the whole. We did everything up. That, got that page. This one. There you go. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. And then reopening the date. We are back to eight point eleven.
Right.
Because we're going back to Colin. Colin's going to come back and he has all the answers. It's going to be great.
I'll do my best to provide all the answers. So just a couple of things that had come up. First, we have confirmed that this would be eligible for Community Works Funds. It would fall under the resilience project category. The only thing is we would just need to complete some additional requirements because it's what we consider the third-party project. And those are listed in the report, but that is confirmed eligible. And then regarding how much we allocate from that southern pilt each year, it's usually between eighty to a hundred and twenty or a hundred and thirty thousand. The two large ones are the Squamish Food Council and Squamish Camp. And those are both forty thousand dollars a year. And then we have provided funding to the library, but that wasn't, I haven't seen a resolution for that in twenty twenty five. So that was twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four.
And how much was it?
The, that was forty thousand a year as well for the library.
We haven't done that this year?
I don't believe so. I can follow up with you on that offline, but if we were to continue that going forward, then that would be a hundred and twenty thousand. And those are the three main recurring transactions.
To come out of the
Southern.
Four nineteen.
Yeah.
Or the, yes. So and then, yeah, sorry, you have a question or? And then computers have died on me. Anyway. I have a new one with better battery life now, but I don't have it yet.
You know, it's all in there.
I got most of them memorized. So and then all this comment on like, this request at five hundred thousand is abnormally large for the SLRD, like for a third-party request. We don't see them this high. And that's kind of why this discussion needs to be had. And then in terms of like bringing it back in a month, like I'm not sure I have a better answer of what we could support in a month. Really, that question needs to be addressed through the twenty twenty six budget. We've allocated out all the projects we had for twenty twenty five and those balances in the report account for every project that we have in the budget for this year. So if we wanted to consider this for twenty twenty six, it would probably be after we've done a full flush of the twenty twenty six budget. That being said, the suggestion around a hundred thousand dollars, like I think that would work. You know, those balances that we have for twenty twenty five are unspent and are from twenty twenty five. So those are there to spend and we have funds coming in in twenty twenty six to help fund twenty twenty six projects. But I would also like, you know, look to the area D director on whether or not he has any other projects that he had in mind for twenty twenty six that finance and, you know, Mark or myself may not be aware of, so.
I I will come to you. Director DeMare had his hand up for quite a long time before, so Sal, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Director Stoner mentioned that uh, you know, Squamish helped this time to secure other funding. I'm wondering why there isn't any provincial funding available. They mentioned that they they thought the citizens of work for the college were in B C Park. And and to me, somewhere, there's got to be some funding from the provincial government for for the few buildings. Or do they just fund cooperates?
Well, that would be a good question for the applicants, like for the search and it would have been great to have them come and ask so that we could have asked these questions to them directly. How did this request come in?
Yeah, today, in the in their report, clearly in a letter to us, doesn't mention anything like that. Where they've actually gone out and looked around.
I don't think any of us can really answer your question, though, Sal, about is there provincial money for them to apply for? Have they applied for it? And were they denied? I don't think we can answer that today.
I do surprise that they haven't applied for provincial funding.
I would think that they had, but, um, okay.
Yeah, it would be really good to know.
Yeah.
Thank you. Sorry, I just wanted to re recap. The the amounts are roughly forty forty thousand dollars to three. Having to have the two that we, is that is that eighty thousand? Happened already this year, so that's
Yeah, oh, correct.
So it's just the the forty, whether we want to the library bit, we're trying to, okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
And I'm gonna go to, sorry.
Well, I was just gonna say, whenever we send these budgets, like anything that's been allocated via a board resolution is deducted from the balance, whether or not we've written a check and paid it out. So if we have projects in the budget that maybe haven't been spent, like I'm still accounting for that when I provide the budget.
With the caveat, except for those like future ones that do live inside of like aspirational planning, look forward, like, is the reoccurring, if we haven't expressed it through a budget.
There's no resolution for it, or it's not in the twenty twenty five budget, then it's not accounted for, and it's in everyone's mind, and that's it.
So I think where I am just on 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 this, I'm not ready to make a resolution is is likely a hybrid approach, refine that number, which is maybe a hundred thousand dollars we're comfortable doing today, or whatever the number is today, and referring the balance to budget process to see if there is something that we can we can rationalize in future with better context and other funding sources, maybe, but but that number might also be zero when we get there. But I do think it's important to have us on the radar. So that's kind of where I'm sitting on this right now.
Yeah, just in in terms of your first question, that this came to yourself chair and our C A O in May, it was brought to the board in July as correspondence request, and then, yeah, in July, I was forwarded for staff support.
Thank you.
Um, and I will note, knowing the president, having correspondents with him, I know he's would be all over any funding source available, and I do and I've heard it across the board that provincial funding for SAR is a challenge, and talking to the counterpart in the district Squamish. It is something that we that shouldn't, and I'm happy that I'll be working with her to add my voice to the proceedings.
Do I have you on the list? Next on my list is Director Rainbow, then I have Director DeMare, then I have Director Pat Gill, and then Director Stoner. Go ahead, Tony.
Okay, so for Area D, as I mentioned before, I'm not interested in any select funds that are touching any of this select. The Community Works Fund, I don't want to touch that right now, and I really want to talk to them about the state, you know, about various assets in that that might need attention. I don't want to leave that short of cash. So I'm finding myself in full agreement with Almond over there, at least I think I am. I I wouldn't make a motion right now.
I would like to get through the rest of the questions.
Or I could say what the motion is going to be, but I just, what I was supportive, this, he said what he was supportive. I would, I would support it. Well, most money's coming either from Area D or I would support the the library. I'm not quite sure how that has got to this point of the year without us doing it, so I support a motion that provided forty thousand for them. And and I would support a hundred thousand dollars for S S Search and Rescue out of that Southern Pilte. And with an attach to that would be a comment that we would review between now and the end of our budget process to see whether we can increase that to that. And that's, and I would like us to think, is there any other source of funding? We've listed three things there. Is there anything else, you know, any other way of increasing that a hundred thousand?
Okay, well, we're not doing that now.
No, 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 but that, we could do the hundred thousand, and and then go to increasing it someday today.
Yep. Um, Director DeMare.
Just want to get some clarity on the Southern Pilte. It's a combination for the District of Lillo and Area D. Does funding that funding have to be spent on uh, pro uh organizations or projects or services that are both both residents of each community use?
Yeah.
In other words, could it be used for buying fresh water?
No, it has to be used for something that is a benefit to the residents of the District of Squamish and Area D.
Okay, thank you.
And Chris?
Yeah, I was just, uh, uh, quickly, I think one of the challenges with search and rescue, it's often really benefiting visitors who are neither Area D nor District of Squamish, so we're providing a service to tourists and so on. But just one of my drivers for my support in Squamish is within the Squamish boundaries, it's usually a collaborative response between Squamish Fire and Rescue and Search and Rescue, and so the less search and rescue can respond, the more burden on the the municipal fire service and expense and so on. Is it a similar situation like with Britannia Fire and Rescue where where, you know, the the less search and rescue is able to respond the greater the burden on the other fire services in Area D or?
Let's lose the chair. My assumption would be the same. I can't speak for a fire chief, but I know that they do work in close collaboration with Squamish.
I've I've returned you fire work closely with Search and Rescue.
Yeah.
I was gonna make a motion, but I'll let Tony do that. I'm ready for a motion, Tony. Doesn't have to be perfect. You want Arvin to make a motion since you already are.
And the motion would be that we approve an expenditure of forty thousand dollars.
No, we're not talking library at all right now.
Oh, we're not talking library tomorrow. Okay, in that case, I'll leave that for a minute.
For a month, at least.
Allocate a hundred thousand dollars to Search and Rescue, Squamish Search and Rescue from Southern Pilte.
Great.
And I'd like to comment on that if it's seconded.
Great. And Director Herford is seconding it. You may briefly speak to it.
So, so might.
Briefly. No historical context.
No, 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 we're just looking.
Back machine.
I'm looking forward to our budget process and suggesting that we look at ways to, I'd like to increase that amount, but I don't think it's responsible to do it at this time.
Great.
So I'd like to look at that during the budget thing.
So let's friendly amendment, a hundred thousand dollars being committed today and referring this process to the budget process.
Move two motions, please.
Two separate motions? Okay, so the motion on the floor is that we contribute a hundred thousand dollars from Southern Area Pilte Funds to Squamish Search and Rescue for the capital campaign of the new build. I have it moved. I have it seconded. Are there any comments? Would anyone like to oppose this motion? All in favor?
Right.
Motion carries. Now, the second motion would be that we refer this the balance of the request to the budget process.
Process.
Yeah.
And that we communicate that to Squamish Search and Rescue.
Yeah, that's fair. Seconded by Director Herford. Comments?
Uh, I will support this because I do think it's good to do our due diligence and expand on our budgeting process. I think realistically, by the time we get to the end of our budgeting process, it'll likely be too late. They are out of their current home by July twenty twenty six, so their bill needs to basically be done by the time we're done our budgeting process, but.
And they're not sharing the money?
What's that?
They've built it.
They, well, hopefully they will have found money elsewhere by then, but I am happy that we were able to find some money in our current budget process. This is an extraordinary large budget request to come in mid cycle, so I'm not advocating to put more money into the budget at this point. I think this is the appropriate process, but I just wanted to flag for the board that it will likely be too late, at least for the capital campaign. Okay.
But.
I'm just, I'm happy that we found a way to move forward and as the biggest step we could comfortably take today. I think this step of referring to the budget process makes good sense. We have all the the appropriate information in front of us and our competing priorities while we have that discussion, so I do think that depending on the success of their funding, to my colleagues' comments around timeline, I think there's some phasing that might just need to be happening here as part as part of this, and I'm I'm sure if we find a way to find some additional funds, if they'll find a way to bring that to bear, you know, a good way.
Okay, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you both.
Great, thank you.
All right, nine point one, Chair's Purple Report. I don't have anything, I haven't already shared. Moving on to Director Reports, we're getting the Hurley Forest Service Roads. Director DeMare, do you want to speak to this?
Please. If if thoughts were like C A O Helmer to to talk about the business meeting that was requested at U V C M and what staff has been doing. First.
Okay, go ahead.
G A O Colin. This was a request that we made to Director DeMare. We were not successful in a ministers meeting and proposed that a letter of support, advocacy letter be sent.
Right.
Basically, we can do.
So this, uh, yeah. Okay, so would you like to make this motion?
Yeah. Yeah, I think, well, does anybody have any questions for? You've read it already.
Yes, yeah, okay. And I have it seconded by Director Rich Jones.
Good.
My comments. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Director DeMare. Correspondence for action. Uh, there's a ten point one is a request for a tax exemption from the Pemberton Wildlife Association to their shooting range. Would you like to make that motion? Seconded by Director Rainbow. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. A second tax exemption request from McDonald's Communities Limited for the Britannia Beach Heritage Buildings.
I thought we had something in place, uh, uh, scheduled.
We have Director LaFrance here on the screen to answer that question. Did you hear the question?
Yeah, it generally is approved because we have that heritage revitalization agreement that was signed, I think, in twenty twenty one. This year, we thought we would request a letter just confirming that nothing has changed. They still own the buildings. And just because in order to give anything other than a one year premise of tax exemption, we need elector assent, so we've been doing it annually. And it was a request this year to have a formal request from the corporation.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Would you like to, do you have a question?
I do have a question, and just to refresh my memory, is the agreement that we have in perpetuity, or is there a time bound expectation for how long we would provide tax exemptions for?
I think there's a maximum of ten years.
It's a ten year sliding scale.
Suzanne, do you have an answer for that?
I was just gonna say, unfortunately, I don't know that potentially if the Director of Planning might know if she's around, but I can look and report back next month or or whatever is available.
Yeah, beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the motion is moved by Director Rainbow, seconded by Director Matt. Further comments? All in favor?
Just a question, my colleague, we asked for some more context here, and do we have looking for a level of comfort in making this decision or the need to make it now in the absence of the that additional context that we just heard was coming to us next month? So do we need to make it? My question is, do we need to make this decision now? And does that additional information impact this, or is this to inform subsequent years of this arrangement that we don't quite understand?
When when this first came to the board, when they when they were first declared heritage buildings, and before they'd actually started doing anything with them, they came with a proposal that they would be exempt from tax the first year. And that it would be a ten year schedule, so in ten years, then they're paying for tax. That that's my recognition of it.
So does that, and is, I would, personally, I won't be supporting this right now because I would like to see that and understand how this ask aligns or doesn't with that. And I'm not saying that it doesn't, but in that absence, I don't feel I have enough information to make a decision on this, so I won't be supporting. I would look for another alternative.
It's my understanding that this motion is required for the next step, but I would defer to Director LaFrance. She can provide that information.
Okay.
Yeah, these permissive tax exemptions have to be approved by the end of October, so this would come as a bylaw next month for the board's approval. So this is kind of the pre step to say, yes, we want to support it with a bylaw.
Right. Go to Chris.
I propose that we support this in alignment with the existing agreement, and so when it comes in October, can see that, see that it's aligned, and then that makes sense?
This is a motion to move this forward to an October bylaw. We can deny the bylaw at that time.
Yeah, exactly, that's what I'm saying.
So it doesn't actually change the language of the motion that's already been approved. Everyone comfortable with that? We can, we can have this conversation next month. Yeah. I wondered. And Angela, are we on a point?
Yeah.
Did I call a question?
No, not yet.
I'll call the question. All in favor? Is there anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We're now at ten point three, which was an item that was pulled from the consent agenda, and I don't remember what the what it was. I didn't write it down.
That was item four point two point two, which was a correspondence for information that was received from the Ministry of Forests Sea to Sky Natural Resource District in regards to the Shannon Basin visitor use management strategy. You wanted to tell me the number again, sorry. Or two two.
Two two, in the consent agenda.
Page thirty nine.
Thirty nine. Oh, yeah, sorry. Yes. Um, I thought that was really good information, and I was just suggesting that we incorporate it into the Area D O C P at such time as you get there, or that it be considered. Particularly the management actions, page fifty three to fifty five, just for Director Rainbow's consideration.
Right. So the motion could be that we refer this letter to
Area D, planning, so that's the area.
Okay, would you like to make that motion, Director Richard Altman, and seconded by Director Rainbow? Comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Any late business? Okay, we do have the two pieces of late business that were added to the agenda yesterday or the day before. Twelve point one is correspondence for information from the City of Pitt Meadows requesting support and endorsement of a U V C M resolution increased ministry funding for agriculture. Just for the information of the board, I've asked that all of these letters that we get from all of the councils, there are a hundred and eighty nine councils in Whistler in British Columbia, and they all want endorsement and support, and they all want us to stand up at U V C M and speak on their behalf. I've asked, instead of us getting them in various packages as the year comes along. speak on their behalf. I've asked instead of us getting them in various packages as the year comes along that these all get bundled for next year so that there's one package of U V C M endorsement requests, so that we can consider them all together. Rather than having them sort of spread out over several months. I think that's just really for all of us.
Much appreciated.
Be able to read it all at once. Tony, go ahead.
What do you want a motion to receive this?
Yeah, that's all it is. Yeah. Uh, moved by Director Rainbow, seconded by Director Hopful. Comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. And again, U V C M resolutions are up to each of us as individuals. You can vote on it however you want. This is not a, a board support or not support. This is up to each of us to vote at convention on our own. Very well. Uh, twelve point two is an invitation for feedback regarding Metro Vancouver Solid Waste Management Plans, and I think we were going to ask them as a delegation to us, right?
That's our permission.
Right, so staff's recommendation is that we ask the board, the Metro Van staff to come as a delegation to explain their requests and we can give feedback at that time. Go ahead. You're moving it. Okay, any comments? I think this is important work that does impact all of us, especially as we see the movement of waste through our communities and how that continues to evolve. So this is important and I look forward to that delegation. I will call the question. All in favor? Is there anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right. Are there any notice of motion? I don't see any. Let's recess this regular meeting. And, oh no, we can just close. I'll ask for a motion that we go into close, please. Moved by Director Herford, seconded by Director Morton. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries.